We are.
Ron says the tree, Ron says the city is clever. It's a beautiful plant and it's free to access to the water. What they want to ask to do, we have involved and done that. So all the street trees have either developed or installed or haven't installed.
Yes.
Which surprised me because I thought we had done street trees. Well, no, not in 24 years he's down here at all. It's a, it's a, the city itself, they're not putting up all street trees. They have a ram skid.
One of my passions, my secret, right? It's a, it's a second public school.
Yes, it gets, uh, one of the things you're at in a market town, it's too many. If you're gonna plant, yeah. Yeah, park tree for you, you can't put it in, I think, with the, see the four or six.
That's all. That'd be pretty good.
So anytime you want some flowers, it's a road bike. Because the neighbors trying to figure out if it was a different size. Not for being like, okay, this is what the driver cares. So everywhere down the middle.
Nowhere.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting on this. We're gonna get the group together.
Well, we did.
So I don't get, I don't know the hell he came.
I came to one of the meetings.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I mean, I've seen it all the time. But they just kind of, that's, you have to look at it.
Which, I think the mayor's, the mayor's point is, yeah. He just goes, I guess, for us, maybe, but it's something. It's just so good, we can start discussing, making an investment on four. You do ask that, but I didn't.
But I always say, I'm interested in our. I'm like, it's better to say, or be, or be, it's been.
If he went, he'll answer, no. Tonight, you could, you could vote for it, for it, for it.
That's not hard.
Because it's, it's the second reading of the case, it's Peter.
Syrup in a heart. Is that your sound like cops?
I'm just gonna yell. Make, make your, make your.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
You could just.
Good evening, good evening. I know. I have to tell everyone. Good evening, everyone. That's the first time I've gotten to use this gavel, so I'm pleased to have that opportunity. So it is Monday, March 18, 2024, 7 o'clock PM, or two or three minutes after 7:00. This is the regular meeting of the Prospect Kentucky City Council. I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is introduction of our special guest, Kate Pharoah, who's a candidate for Kentucky House of Representatives for District 48. And she has with her a special guest that I'll let her introduce.
My son.
So the floor is yours. If we'd like people to speak over at the, at the lectern, because there's a microphone and it's for people who may be watching on YouTube. Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna be on YouTube?
Yep. Wait, they may not, they may not see you, but.
So, let's see. Can I take it out?
Yes.
All right, hear me?
No, it doesn't work in here, it's only for the people.
Oh, it only works on YouTube, okay.
Remotely, yeah.
I should have had my son run the tech on this tonight. I'm sorry, I'm not technically savvy. But first of all, I want to say thank you for having me tonight. Um, I really just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to everyone that's here tonight and might be watching at home, apparently now, so. Um, anyway, I really just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and who I am, and I won't take up too much, but I am running for House District 48. I am running because, well, I ran for school board a couple of years ago in Oldham County. Part of this district takes up a little bit of Oldham County. So I ran for school board because I wanted to get involved and do more for education, and I have two young sons. I didn't win, I came in a close second, but I decided I really wasn't done, and I wanted to do more. So I went to Frankfurt last year and worked with other parents and got some literacy bills pushed through. We got a really big bill moved through that I was pretty proud of. Um, after all that work and running for school board, my name kind of got popped around and I got recruited to then run for House District 48. Um, so here I am, running for an office, I'm not a politician. I'd like to think of myself as an aspiring advocate. I really want to do more for all of us, and I want to get to Frankfurt to do that. Um, so I'm here to listen because I also believe in common ground, common sense. That's one of the biggest things that I would like to see more in Frankfurt and in our government across the board, is people that are willing to really listen and engage both sides of the aisle to come up with what matters most to folks. And how do we get good policy pushed through that addresses most of our needs, not the outer rim extremes? But in order to do that, it means that we have to listen. So I'm here to listen and introduce myself, so that if you have any questions or you want to know more about me, you can find me. It's katefor48.com, pretty simple, K-A-T-E-F-O-R-48.com. You can go there, you can learn all about me, and you can reach out and message me, and I would love to hear more from you guys about what matters when you're going to the polls and you're clicking that button for one name on the list. Why do you click that button? What's driving you there? So I won't take up much more of your time unless there's time for me to, but you told me three minutes and I want to respect your all's time.
Appreciate that.
Anything else?
Nope, but we appreciate you being here. You better introduce your son.
Oh, my son, Jack Pharoah.
Appreciate you being here also.
Hey, Jack.
Yes, he's a sophomore at South Oldham High School, and he loves history, so it's been fun engaging my kids. Both my kids have been on the trail with me, getting outdoors and doing all the things and learning about what this looks like in real life.
Great. I have to disagree with something you said.
Okay.
You said you were not a politician.
I'm not.
Are you running for office?
I am running for office, yes, I just.
I think you're a politician.
I'm a politician. I never, by default, I'm a politician, yes, it's just not a job. I will, I'll, I'm gonna step into that slowly, it's gonna take me a minute, but I'd like to think of myself more as an advocate for the Commonwealth. So I can be both, I guess that's correct, thank you, sir.
Thanks so much, Kate.
Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you again for your time and for your service. This is, I'm sure, a thankless job, most don't often get thanked for, but I'd like to say thank you. I lived out here a long time ago, and I appreciate government people that stepping up into thankless jobs, doing the work that often goes unnoticed. But you all are doing great stuff out here, so thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of the February 20th City Council meeting have been distributed. Are there any additions, corrections? Not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Gibson moved to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the comments from citizens. No one has signed up to speak, I know there are gonna be some folks speaking in connection with some of the, at least one of the items on the agenda, which is the awarding of the Beach Craig Mile Award. So I think there's some folks that will speak, be speaking about that, and some others making reports and so forth, but any other citizen comments? Anybody we should hear from before we start into the agenda? All right, in that case, we'll move into the mayor's report. In my report, I'm going to comment on three topics, including first, various recent and future city events. Second, amendments to the forestation ordinance that are before the council this evening for a first reading. And third, the presentation of the 2024 Beach Craig Mile Award to our friend and longtime Forestation Board Chair Lee Tucci. First, I will report on recent and future city events. On Sunday, March 10th, the first Art in City Hall exhibition ended. On that day, in an event covered by WDRB News, the exhibition committee hosted 45 Prospect residents and guests for a superb lecture given by a retired professor from the University of Louisville's Tate Art Institute. The event also included the dedication of the council room as the site for future exhibitions. The committee's planning its next exhibition, Artists of 40059, and that exhibition will open in late June. On Saturday, March 16th, so I guess day before yesterday, the Parks Committee sponsored a bird walk through Little Hunting Creek Park. Sally Schneider organized the event, and more than 20 Prospect residents participated. Jacob Kreider, a naturalist with Creasy Mahan Nature Preserve, led the walk to and from Pitney Pond, Putney Pond, along the parks' trails and boardwalks. It was a lot of fun. David Holmes was also in it, and so we appreciate that, David. On Saturday, October 5th, so coming up on October 5th, at the John Evans Pavilion in Little Hunting Creek Park, the city will hold a 50th birthday party, marking the 50 years that have passed since 1974, when the Commonwealth of Kentucky chartered the city of Prospect. Prospect resident Terry Rancorn is chairing a committee that is planning the October 5th celebration. Terry, a Navy veteran and a retired FBI agent, served on the committee that planned the city's Veterans Day event. Additional upcoming events include Kentucky Shakespeare's performance of A Midsummer Night's Dream, the return of the city's summer concert series, a kid's fest, and the city's Fourth of July celebration. So there's a lot going on over the next few months. The second part of my report has to do with the proposed changes to the city's forestation ordinance. Substantial work has been undertaken by the Forestation Board, council members Foulter, Hines, and Holmes, former council member Sandra Leonard, and others. I also participated in the process along the way, at each step along the way. Two options are before the council this evening for a first reading. Option A resulted from work by the Forestation Board and me, largely from the Forestation Board and me. At my request, David Holmes recently reviewed the draft and made suggestions that substantially improved it. So that's before you as option A. Sandra Leonard sent option B to me and reported that Frank Foulter and Linda Knox also assisted with that draft. I expressed my thanks to the Forestation Board, the council members who've been involved in the process, and the former council member for all of their work on the proposed changes. When I became mayor, it became apparent to me that the Forestation Board needed assistance in enforcement of the ordinance. Our Forestation Board is made up of dedicated volunteers who have a depth of knowledge about trees, but who do not have experience or expertise in code enforcement. Draft A makes clear that the Forestation Board will take the lead in advising the city on enforcement, but also makes clear that actual enforcement will be undertaken by the city through the city's code enforcement officer. I encourage the council to give a first reading this evening to option A and to not, and to not give a first reading to option B. The third part of my report is the presentation of the 2024 Beach Craig Mile Award. In 1990, the city established the Craig Mile Award to recognize outstanding public service and commitment to the city. When we presented Jeff Sherard with the 2023 Craig Mile Award, John Evans spoke eloquently about Beach Craig Mile, who had served as the city's second mayor. At the time that Mr. Craig Mile served as mayor, he was the city's only employee. Which is hard to imagine. As the plaque recites, Beach Craig Mile served Prospect before it became a city and then continued his tireless service after incorporation as a citizen, councilman, and mayor. Lee has clearly earned this recognition, and it is fitting that we honor Lee soon after we learned that Prospect has been recognized as a tree city by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 16th straight year. The city has also been recognized for the seventh year as a growth city. As I previously reported, Todd Everly, John Embry, and Linda Wardell serve as an advisory committee regarding the Craig Mile Award. They unanimously endorsed Lee for this recognition. Neither John Embry nor Linda Wardell could attend the meeting this evening, and they both send their congratulations and best wishes to Lee. Fortunately, Todd Everly is in attendance and will make remarks. Others who will be speaking include Mike Powers and Linda Knox. Others who may wish to speak will be given that opportunity. With that having been said, I recognize Mayor Everly.
Here's the problem of the agenda. Second to nomination. Crash, you're lucky. Thank you, Tucci. Yes.
It's all.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
I don't recall when I first met Lee. Even though I'm not running for president, I don't recall it. But Lee and Sandy came here, bought a house here in Fox Harbor in 1991. Myself and Harriet came in 2002. So there was a time when I wasn't sure how I got to know him, but likely it was after I was elected to Prospect City Council in 2004. Lee and I both came from small cities. He was born in a small city in Pennsylvania, and I was from a small city in northern Illinois. He could have been my older brother, but ultimately he became my great friend. We were both active in scouting where we took an interest in trees and forestation. Two years later, I ran for mayor in fall of 19, fall of 2006, with a campaign promise for a tree protection ordinance and a goal of becoming a Tree City USA. Lucky enough, I won as the mayor and was sworn in in January 2007. In February 2007, I made a trip to Frankfurt to the Division of Forestry with the goal of becoming a Tree City USA and spoke with urban and community forester Peter Barber. In April of that year, 2007, I persuaded four citizens to serve on the committee to draft a Prospect Forestation Ordinance. Harry Harden, the late Harry Harden, who was a historic tree enthusiast, Mike Powers, an attorney and friend in state government, Catherine Wallace, an attorney friend and also a forested landowner here in Prospect, and Lee, a Fox Harbor friend and industrial engineer, chaired the committee. In April, through April and, April through October, for six months, we researched tree ordinances on various jurisdictions and developed and discussed councilist drafts, and also working with the Division of Forestry. In November 2007, the proposed ordinance was introduced on its first reading. December 10th, 2007, a month later, the second reading was passed, adopted, and signed into law. February 18th, 2008, Forestation Board members were appointed and the council approved Harry Harden, Mike Powers, Catherine Wallace, and Greg Heelsman also joined Lee as chair. In spring of 2008, the Forestation Board organized with regular activities. April 28th, 2008, a list of applicable unacceptable for planting and invasive trees or trees designated for removal was adopted. In June, June and July 2008, the Division of Forestry trained 25 volunteer individuals, Prospect citizens, for a tree assessment inventory. Those of the individuals categorized every street tree, which is our publicly owned streets, not the forestated trees, but every tree, and recorded it and put it in a data document. They noted the species, the location, and the condition, and any recommendations for removal or maintenance in that document. So it was a comprehensive look directly at, on foot, of every tree that the city owned, except for the forest, forested areas. November 1st, 2008, was the first Prospect Arbor Fest and tree giveaway. Next year, the January 7th, was a, uh, there was a joint visit from the Kentucky Division of Forestry and the US Forest Service Atlanta Regional Office sent a team to study our role as a city, which completed a complete public street tree inventory. On April 3rd, 2009, Prospect was awarded the Tree City USA status, held at Clear Creek Park in Shelby County, and was the only new Kentucky city to get that award in 2009. This year will mark our 16th year as a tree city. The tree inventory, in June, June 2010, the tree inventory was updated after four years from the original inventory, and then included the Emerald Ash Bore Treatments, where we put metal tags on all the Emerald, all the ash trees, placed and treated them as area ash trees, over any, any area ash tree over 10 inches in diameter. But enough history, we are here to honor a remarkable citizen. Lee has dedicated 17 years of volunteer advocacy for trees in Prospect. Those 17 years represent over a third of Prospect's 50-year history as a city. In his 15-plus years as chair of the Forestation Board, he has made incredible strides during his watch, seeing many activities, including monthly Forestation Board meetings, tree assessments for hazardous or diseased trees, Arbor Day and Arbor Fest celebrations with free tree giveaways, a shared cost replanting program, and certified arborist consultations. But his work is more than meetings and events, it demands constant attention. It's a job. Trees assist our city in countless critical ways. They absorb the carbon dioxide we create. They provide the oxygen which sustains us. They cool our landscapes with shade. They provide food and shelter to sustain our wildlife, not to mention providing aesthetic beauties for our peace of mind. But trees grow and trees fall. Sometimes in inopportune times and places of the day, the days of the week, or the months of the year. They need to be carefully planted and well-maintained. Lee dedicates his attention to our trees round the clock. Many residents support government, which makes things better for all. Some residents roll up their sleeves and get it done. Lee does both. Thanks, Lee, for your dedication to Prospect, and congratulations on receiving the Craig Mile Public Service Award for 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mike Powers?
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, uh, council members. Um, I'm proud to say that I've known Lee Tucci for over 30 years, but initially I only knew him socially as the guy who married Sandy. When Todd created the Forestation Board, namely Chairman, I was named as a member. While others were left over the years for various reasons, including myself, Lee remained chairman for all these years, so I think it's safe to say that Lee has perseverance and dedication, what he's been doing. Among the main responsibilities at Forestation Board, who Todd alluded to, was taking inventory of trees. And I repeat this only because my daughter called one day while Lee and I gathered out in trees, and she asked where dad was. Mona said, well, he's out camping tree, to which our daughter said, she thought it was wonderful to live in a community that so values trees that people would do that. And we can thank Lee for that. Lee's love of trees and nature in general has greatly benefited the city of Prospect. It's dedicated so much to his time for the city in so many different ways. On particular note, mentioned by Mayor Everly is creation of Arbor Fest, which takes place during the last Saturday, October now, where we have given away, or the city has given away hundreds of quality trees for planting and no cost. And it's done at that time of year because it's the most optimal time for planting. We also have had arborists and other professionals, tree professionals there at the event, who have shared their knowledge with us. And it was always very interesting and time to go, and people benefited from that greatly. I don't have too many pages, it's just none. Oh, yeah. Lee has written numerous articles that appear in Prospect newsletters. His favorite one has to do with launching volcanoes around trees. You'll have to ask him about that, but do so when you have plenty of time to hear his draft. Now, his love of trees and love of Prospect probably to all who know him, all who've been around him, and we're fortunate to have him. That's such a highly valued, valued member of our community. He is a man who I admire and I greatly am very proud of, my friend. I know no person more worthy of this honor than Lee Tucci. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike, and Linda Knox, Lee's fellow Forestation Board member.
You didn't warn me I was gonna talk about this, but I'd like to talk about this, and it made me think about, when did I meet Lee Tucci? And I came to an early forestation meeting as part of the board for my HOA. We had a great interest in the trees in our community, and we had some concerns, and we didn't know kind of what to do next. And as a person who likes trees and likes to garden, this was important to me. So I came to the meeting, we got some great advice. We were connected with Peter Barber in Kentucky State, and he was a great help to us. And somehow the conversations led to an interview with Lee and Mayor Everly. And before you know it, I'm on Forestation Board. And that was roughly, I'd say about 2010, and it's been ever since. So in those years, I've gotten to work with council members, I've got to work on all kinds of projects with Lee and our wonderful arborist, we've worked on, you know, communication for the city. But, you know, behind it all, Lee just is so inspiring, he's so knowledgeable, and he's just a pleasure to work with. And, you know, we get to hear things about families, and I found out that he and my brother went to the same grad school. You know, it's a small world, you never know. But just nice things and a great family, and he is somebody that, that means a lot to me, and Sandy's just as wonderful. So I thank you for everything he's done to help me, and wishing well, and he definitely deserves this award. So thank you all.
Thanks. There's some other good friends of Lee's in the room. I see one's already stood up and is walking forward, Mr. Herb Schulhafer.
Yeah, name's Herb Schulhafer, and I've been a member of the Forestation Board, I think, about 12 years. And, uh, there's been no true, hard-working leader that I've ever been connected with then, Lee Tucci, and it's been a real pleasure to be there. And I, I actually, I want to compliment the committee for being so smart to make that selection. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Susan Nicholson.
Good evening, I just have a quick comment, and I want to thank the committee too for recommending Lee for the award. Lee for the award. Because when I first heard that, I thought, you've got to be kidding. Lee hasn't received it yet? He should have been first on the list. And he's a, an asset to our city and congratulations, Lee. Very well deserved. And I, too, met Lee as Sandy's husband. Oh, that guy.
Lee, I've gave you the opportunity to make a rebuttal if you've got any.
Well, I have a theme, and that is there's been a lot of contributors to the Prospect Forestation Program. Trees have always been important to City Prospect. And now with the global warming and climate change, almost everybody in the world realizes we need to take care of our trees. And it's taken a team effort, and a team effort is continuing right today. The council, present council, present mayor, past mayors, past council have all supported the forestation, work with funding, with personal interest, with participating in the actual meetings of Forestation Board, and in some cases going out to visit the trees themselves, you know? And Todd and the council, two thousand and seven, had a lot of foresight, that they saw that creating a board which was focused on the single issue, trees, would produce a better result, and it has. We have more trees, better trees, healthier trees now on city lands and throughout the city than we did in two thousand and seven. And when I say throughout the city, the, the board, the city finance, has given away probably about a thousand flowering trees over these years with the Arbor Fest, anywhere from fifty to a hundred a year. And you can see these flowering trees, but start driving around. And a lot of the flowering trees came through this Forestation Program. And I wanted to add also, Todd was talking about how we got to help from the Division of Forestry, and we still get some help from the Division of Forestation. But when we did the tree inventory, they not only came out and trained about thirty-five volunteer citizens who did this, they walked around on the streets and reached Prospect and helped make sure that we identified whatever tree we had, we were looking at. A lot of us didn't know, and they, they made sure we did the right thing. And I wanted to mention also that some of the past Forestation Board members worked on these issues, like Christie Kramer and Pat and Randy Hollup have moved away, but they also contributed. And the Hollups built a whole computer matrix of trees by street, by residence, by street number, you name it. And also want to say that we've been partners with Parks, and Parks has really helped. Some may not be aware that using MSD money, uh, the board joined with Parks, planted more than two hundred trees along what is now the Orange Tree. And Linda Wardell, uh, who was on council at that time, helped our city arborists, Andrea and Angela, who's always done a great job, pick out the sites exactly where they, they wanted them. Finally, I have to say, we have a great Forestation Board right now. We have a great new leader, Linda Knox, but also Herb, Connie, and David Clay. They've all done a lot of work and have provided a lot of thought to what the Forestation Board should do. So the point, it's taken a lot of people over a lot of years, and they often be recognized. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One, one comment that you made reminded me, I don't think, it's been publicly announced that Linda Knox is becoming the, this is your last, you've ended your term as Chair of the Forestation Board, and we sure appreciate that. And Linda Knox has agreed to serve in that role. And my understanding, the Forestation Board has made that selection, and Linda's the new chair at this time, so.
Thank you.
And Lee, I hope you'll speak a little bit during the Forestation Report, even though I think Linda will be giving it, if you've got any comments about the ordinances that are proposed. This is the second plaque for the Craig Mile Award, and the first plaque got filled up, Sandy Tucci's already on there. She's, she's been, received it in the past. Susan, I don't, I don't know why they didn't do the same thing with Lee and Sandy that they did with Susan and Nick Nicholson, and that is give it to both of them at once. But, but we're, we're making up for that now, and, and we sure appreciate Sandy's service and your service, Lee.
You're always taking care of them.
And this is the supplemental plaque, the plaque's out in the, in the lobby, and this one hangs right underneath it. So we appreciate all your service and congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Next item on the agenda is financial report. John?
I will summarize financials for February. Cash on hand, which consists of our checking account, our money market account, and the KLC investments totaled three million, nine hundred eighty-six thousand dollars and change. Per the audit that we just received, our new figure for holding funds for retirement is one point four million. Subtracting that amount from cash on hand, we have about two point five million available for spending currently. The, our expenses are in check. We're right on target for this time of the year. And the restricted road aid has now accumulated to two hundred seventeen thousand, five sixty-five. If you have any questions, I'll entertain those.
Questions for John?
Where do we stand with the interest we recruit?
For the year?
For our investment.
Well, I can only, I don't have that in front of me, but as we mentioned at the last meeting, it was a hundred twenty-six thousand for twenty-three. I'd have to get that to you after the meeting.
So it'd be about twelve grand a month or something like that.
Well, we're starting to draw down a little bit on the KLC account for funding, because we're trying to keep as much as we can in there. So again, I don't know the figure right. We're starting around five percent, though, of what we do have invested.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mission and Board Reports, Forestation Board. Chairman, Chairwoman Linda.
Most important thing I'm going to start with is you all need to know that Lee is not leading Forestation. He will still be a wonderful asset to us as long as he chooses to be. And so in terms of the March activities, we reviewed minutes. We can report that the Canopy Tree Program has seven participants this year. We thought there might be eight, but it's seven, and there were four different neighborhoods. So the word is getting out throughout the city, so we hope the program continues. One of the things that we discussed that was a question that came from a council member was as the development of the Roundabout Program comes about, do we need landscaping? And Herb, being the expert that he is, shared with us, you know, there's still a lot of detail and quoting to be done, and that you really wouldn't want to do any planning or any tree work until the construction was complete. His initial impression is that we may not lose that many trees, but once it's said and done, there may be opportunities for some new planting. So that's something to look forward to. We also spent time talking about our new tree plan, and we've got some good ideas that you guys will see before the end of April. So that's in the works as well. We have some different cases to be looking at. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow to look at some potentially hazardous trees, and we'll report that to the city if there's an issue to be looked at further. And I think the only other thing to really bring up now is his first reading of the ordinance. And we weren't aware until last week that it was on the agenda for tonight, and obviously we were a little concerned, but the mayor made sure that we had the latest copy of the revised A and version B. And if that went out to all of us, we've not met as a group or reviewed any of the further changes, but, you know, we are hopeful to see that, you know, we can move forward in a positive way. There were a lot of people involved with version A, and we're, we're very appreciative of David doing additional work that adds hopefully some clarity, as well as some legal aspects of, you know, the enforcement process that will make it better for the city and for us to be more effective as advisors. So Lee, would you like to add anything else on the ordinance at this time?
I can speak in favor, yes.
Okay. Okay. There's your answer. Now, do you have any other questions or concerns for Forestation at this time? Otherwise, that's my report.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda? If not, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate your service and your report. All right. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, as I mentioned, Linda Wardell was not able to be here. I think David Holmes is going to give, there's a written report, but I think David's going to give a verbal report also.
So Linda's report refers to first the Harrods Creek Stream Crossing Bridge Project. The final engineering stamped plans, and that's Herb would say stamped plans, that's critical wording on it, I know Herb, have, have been received and approved. The location and elevation of the bridge has been determined and marked down there. The work to prepare the foundation's going to be started later this spring, but delayed until after the flood season has gone in in March and April. So we're, we're looking at an anticipated fabrication completion in June and the installation thereafter. So sometime, we hope, by the end of June, we'll have a new bridge to have a ribbon cutting for, for our fiftieth anniversary. The Putney Pond Boardwalk Project, they've continued to have ongoing meetings with HIPDA and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and OHM Advisors, and they're looking for the most appropriate sources of funding to try to make this project go forward. They're continuing to work with these organizations to try to find grant applications and to prepare them as, as necessary. In terms of the programs that we've had, there was one that Jacob Kreider did on Kentucky Amphibians, which was well-received. It was here, and he brought in some salamanders and spoke about salamanders and frogs in our area. It was quite interesting. On Saturday, as the mayor mentioned, Jacob, again, the naturalist, did the bird walk with us on Putney Pond, and there were over twenty people in attendance. It was very popular, very interesting. The birds were all out for us. It was, it, it was, it was really amazing. I learned a lot from the standpoint of Jacob would pick out the bird singing, and he would say, look up high for that bird, because that bird generally roosts up high, and then he would tell us when to look low in the trees or bushes for different birds and so forth. I had no idea on that before, and I thought that was very interesting. It was so successful that they're planning another bird walk to be scheduled sometime in April, so look for the date to be announced on that. The mayor has been working hard on a Prospect Adopt a Highway Cleanup Program, where we become, what is the title for that? Sponsor or?
We are, we are, we've adopted, Prospect Parks, Parks has adopted US forty-two within the city's boundaries.
So that's going to be Saturday, April the sixth. We need six to ten adult volunteers to assist in that. There'll be more communications coming out once they're finalized. They're only looking for adults to do the work because of the potential hazard on that, but they've lined up through the chief, our department, to help us assist in terms of keeping it safe. So we're looking forward to that to occur. There will be two wildflower walks this spring, April the seventh, Sunday, and Sunday, April the twenty-first. They will be in the Harrods Creek Park to begin at one P.M. The walks will be led by Jacqueline McGraeau and Carolyn Embry. Two to four volunteers are needed for that, so contact Carolyn Embry if you wish, or Linda, if you wish to volunteer for that. The summer concert program for the John Evans Pavilion, the series of the, has been selected, and we now have the dates and times for those events. We are working on creating a postcard of the dates to be sent to all the residents now. So it would be, as we kind of joke among ourselves, suitable for hanging on your refrigerator. So you can, you can look for the, the dates and keep those, keep those in mind. And, and so we hope that that will come out fairly soon, keeping in mind that the first event is the end of April for Shakespeare in the Park again, and it's Midsummer Night's Dream, if my memory is correct. At the mayor's suggestion, in honor of our fiftieth anniversary, he's asked the Parks and Rec Committee to create what we're calling a Kids' Fest, and that will be in Little Hunting Creek Park on June the twenty-second from ten until noon. The event will feature a performance by the Louisville Leopard Percussionists. For those of you who are unaware of them, and I was, they are a youth percussion group that are immensely talented. We won't get the whole group because it would probably make the trees fall down with the noise that they create, but we're having a smaller group, I think it's seven of them, that will come and perform from the pavilion. We also have a magician who's going to come and walk among the crowds of kids, doing magic tricks for them, a balloon twister, which I never knew that it was called a balloon twister. It's the people who make the balloon animals and things will be there. Face painting, games and crafts. So it should be a, a, a good time for, for the kids and their parents watching the kids, I guess. And we're continuing with Parks Maintenance Issues and invasive plant removal efforts. Any questions?
Any questions for David? Thank you, David. Appreciate that report. Don Gibson, Jefferson County League of Cities.
I have no report because there hasn't been a meeting since, since your last meeting. It's been, it's gone up Thursday, and then the training session on Saturday morning at eight forty-five, and I'll again, welcome to a K F line, revenue, which I've been.
Thanks, Don, for your work with the League of Cities, and I've enjoyed getting more involved with it. It's been, it's been a good experience. I think it's a very helpful organization. Police report, Chief Sharard.
This one will be pretty quick because nothing happened. The two felony reports that we had on here are the ones that I reported on last month, because they'd happened a week or so before, and they were significant, so we told you about them. That involved that South American theft gang or whatever that hit us and Lake Forest and Anchorage or whatever. And then after they hit those three-day period, they left. And they actually came back about two and a half weeks later and hit another house in Anchorage and one in Lake Forest, and then are gone again. That's just sort of the way they operate. There were some arrests made in Phoenix, either Phoenix or Scottsdale, related to that, but it's not going to be just like the same ones, because there's a whole series of these guys that they network, apparently. They do a pretty good job with it. But anyhow, let's see, the house watches continue to stay way up. They had over the same period last year, an increase of seven hundred and fifty for the month. That's pretty good, so go way over thirty thousand for the year, which was a record a year and a half ago, so. Let's see. There really nothing else of any significance, or were a couple of DUI arrests. Let's see, other than that, let's see, Jill Vittito, our administrative assistant, she retired at the end of February. And her spot was filled by one of our retired police officers, Tony Leich. She had retired a month or so before. And she came back and she's doing this as part-time. And, but she will be able to get done what we need to get done in those hours. It's gonna be a lot cheaper for the city. Because as a part-timer, we don't have to pay for a benefit package, retirement and things like that. And she also brings a different skill set that she will be able to do things that Jill wasn't capable of. Like she'll be able to take reports and things, criminal reports at the station. And because she had a rather significant investigative background, she will be able to help Sergeant McKeon do some things with regards to the report system that will help expedite some things and will really be helpful to us. She's familiar with some other database options that we have that will be helpful to the city as well. And she'll work like five hours a day, either four or five days a week. And, but we'll be able to get done what we need to get done. She'll be there most days from like 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So. But other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Chief Sharard? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all your good work. All right. Unfinished business. We have a couple of items that are on for second reading. Three, three items that are on for second reading. First is a second reading of ordinance 633, series 2024. An ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of chapter 37, taxation of the code of ordinances of the City of Prospect. And it changes the date by which tax bill must be sent. To give a little more time, once we receive the information from the PVA.
That is correct.
Okay. So is there a motion to give a second reading to that ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second, is there discussion? If, if. No problem. If not, we'll do a roll call. Sarah Hines? Don Gibson?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
Frank Fulcher?
Yes.
See that ordinance has now been adopted, so that's six to zero. The next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance 634, series 2024, an ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of rules of procedure for the ordinances. And this changes the date of the meeting in January.
Yes. Don't we have to read that?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Frank. We do have to read it. And John, you made the motion. Would you read the title, please, of?
The one we just passed.
The one we, the one we just passed. Read this. You got it?
Yeah, City of Prospect Ordinance 633, series 2024, an ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of chapter 37, colon, taxation of the code of ordinances for the City of Prospect.
Thank you, John. And that, as noted, that ordinance changes the date by which tax bills must be sent out. Thank you, Frank, for catching that. The next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance 634. This is an ordinance that relates to the dates of council meetings, particularly the date of the January meeting. So is there a motion to give that ordinance a second reading to approve it?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded as their discussion. And this, this ordinance changes the January, the January meeting date, so it's the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, instead of?
Any federal holiday that would fall on a Monday, potentially one in June in the future.
Juneteenth. Which was, okay. Are we ready to vote? Is there any further discussion? If not, Frank?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
Yes.
Sarah Hines? That ordinance is also, I've been given a second reading and is approved. And I'll ask Frank, if, I think you made the motion, if you would read the title.
City of Prospect Ordinance Number 634, series 2024. An ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of chapter 32. City Council Rules of Procedure of the Code of Ordinances, ordinances of the City of Prospect.
Thank you. And as noted by John, this changed, as I mentioned earlier, this changes the date of the January council meeting, so that it's on the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, instead of a week earlier. And then it applies to any, any Monday holiday. Any Monday federal holiday. All right. Next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance 635, series 2024, an ordinance from amendment and modification of chapter 150, Building Regulations, Code of Ordinances of the City of Prospect. This has to do with replacement of trees.
So, so Mayor, I, after getting some feedback from the public, proposed changing the ordinance as it indicates in the proposed amendments, which is after that. I don't know whether we need to bring this matter forward first, before I make the motion to amend it. But was told that my amendment was sufficient enough that Chris said we needed a first reading on the whole thing. So I don't, I don't know procedurally how we should proceed on that.
I'll make a suggestion. I suggest that someone move the second reading and approval. Someone second that motion, and then you move to amend the proposed ordinance. And then, and then it will turn into a first reading at that point.
Well, it's a little awkward for me to move to per second reading on something that I could propose to amend, but I will anyway, to get the discussion started. So I, I moved the second reading on the proposed ordinance.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there discussion on that ordinance? Or is there a possible motion to amend that ordinance?
I like to move to amend the ordinance along the lines of second page that you've got on that. It's based on some conversations that I had with feedback from the public indicating that they thought that the ordinance that we had was a little too restrictive in nature and didn't give the Forestry Board sufficient guidance to have enough flexibility, and it didn't involve enough of the city in it telling people who were planning, bringing a plan forth that required a a plan for that if they couldn't agree with the Forestation Board, that they could always appeal this to the Prospect City Council. So for a variety, so in essence, it gives more flexibility both to the board and makes it clear to the person applying for the building permit that if you can't come to an agreement that you think is appropriate, you always have the right to come to the council and talk to us about it.
And as I understood, the first version called for a one, one-to-one replacement.
Didn't say that exactly, but it implied that. And that's what the public response was that I got back that, that in my mind, when I was drafting it, I was thinking more of the Kroger issue as opposed to a vacant lot where you were gonna start building and had a lot of saplings on it. And you could potentially have tens, 20, 30, 40 saplings that you would take out. We're not expecting that you put back that many, but you ought to put back something. And that's what the Forestation Board would be getting with the builder and having discussions and appropriate locations for them and kind of going from there. Trying to be a little more friendly for both the board and for the applicant in the process.
And so there's a motion to amend the ordinance. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
I'll second.
Okay, is there discussion on the ordinance as it would be amended?
This is applied residential and commercial.
Yes, it does. Well, because you have to get a building permit if you're gonna put a fence in, or if you were gonna add an addition onto your house. Yeah, so it does both for residential and commercial.
Okay. That's why. I have a, I have a question relative to enforcement. I take it that 15068 is still operative? It didn't change? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, okay. When people submit plans for building and they have an obligation to tell the city that there's a tree that's gonna be cut down, why would anybody not cut the tree down and then apply for the permit?
I guess assuming that we wouldn't grant them the building permit for the rest of the project that they're having if they did that.
Well, but you don't have anybody, any property owner, can cut any tree at any time for any reason if it's on their property. I think I'm sound there. So my question is, how do you, how do you enforce this? Because a developer would say, okay, get rid of that tree, and we can put your addition or you can building or whatever, or you can clear cut a property at any time, a year, year before it. And I'm, I think that I think that operates in diametrically opposed to the tree canopy concept. If you're, if you're incentivizing people to cut trees down or be penalized when they do something.
Well, Frank, I think that's a very interesting thing, which I would want to consult with the city attorney about how you could make any changes to that. But this is just on for first reading tonight, as we had to have it again. So if you've got some suggestions on how to make that change, or perhaps our city attorney will have some thoughts on, on how to do that. I don't know.
Well, I think the whole purpose of it is to give you leverage to not issue a building permit unless they comply with it. So it's really on the front end and not the back end.
And my sense of this is, this really grew out of the experience with Chase Bank.
Yeah.
And Chase was very good, soon to be corporate citizen and worked with the Forestation Board on a tree replacement plan. Herb Schulhafer was involved in that, and I think that went very well. And I think this ordinance grew out of that experience. But, so, okay, are there further questions or discussion? And we would be voting on the motion to amend. John, it looks like you may have a question.
Well, I was just, it was what Chris said, it's tied to the issuance of a building permit. So they have to submit a plan and say, I'm gonna take out trees, and they don't, and they don't get the building permit. Is that, that's correct. Okay.
But isn't Frank's concern that they could take the tree down?
Before.
Before, prior to, and there's, there's, I mean, we don't have to say so. That's, that's, that's kind of what I heard. So I understand with this wonderful situation with Chase, that obviously that's, that was a little different, because they were doing that before they did the tree permit. Frank's concern is they can just remove anything off their property and then just go to the building permit.
Apply for the building permit.
Of course, which I think is well within their rights. I mean, they can take a tree down on their own property. So.
Well, that's well within their rights, but it's also within your rights to not issue the building permit. And if they take the tree down, it still gives you leverage where you can tell them you took five trees down. If you want your building permit, you have to pick five more trees up.
Yeah, but who's gonna govern? It's the homeowner. I think that's what Frank's getting at, right? The homeowner, before they even agree on getting a developer, he goes in and clears five trees off his lot. Then he hires somebody to come in there and do the work. That's the guy that gets the permit for it. And then so he comes in and says, okay, this is what I'm gonna do. And he's like, I don't need to clear any trees.
Yeah.
Because the other guy did, he would have no way of knowing.
Right.
And there's no way for you to enforce it.
Well, I, you know, you bring up Chase, and I think Lee, Lee and the others involved in it did a great job with negotiating that. And I, and I think that this is written right now. I don't know how many situations, how many, you know, we've tried to figure out how many permits, building permits a year there are. I mean, the probability that this would even need something like this is what my question is.
In, in the Chase situation, you knew how many trees they put, they took out. So I would think normally you would know that. There may be a situation like the chief said, where you don't know. But I think basically the Forestation Board and just the fact that it's a small city enables you to know if they apply for a building permit, how many trees they've taken out. So it's not a perfect solution, but it's better than nothing.
So this is a motion to amend, and it's a first reading. It becomes a first reading of the ordinance as amended, because of the substantial nature of the change from the original version. We've had a good discussion. I think we understand what the issues are. Are we ready to vote on the motion to amend, changing the ordinance, this to a first reading of the ordinance? If we are, I'll start with Sarah.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John Evans? David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
Frank Fulcher?
I abstain.
Okay, so the, there's a first reading, there's been a first reading of the ordinance as amended. That vote of five yes and one abstention. I'm sorry.
I gotta read it, right?
I understand an abstention.
City of Prospect Ordinance Number 635, series 2024. An amended ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of chapter 150, Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Prospect.
Okay, that first reading is passed. Now we'll move to the new business. The first item of new business is Municipal Order 1, an order consenting to the nomination by the mayor of Herb Schulhafer and Lee Tucey of the city to serve on the City of Prospect Forestation Board and a fixing terms of office there, too. Is there a motion to approve Municipal Order 1, series 2024?
So moved.
Is there a discussion? If not, I'll have a roll call. Frank Fulcher?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
Yes.
And Sarah Hines? Okay, that order is approved by a vote of six to zero. The next item on the agenda is the amended budget that John Carter alluded to at a previous meeting. That's in the council packet, and that is on for first reading. Ordinance 636, series 2023, and this for the balance of this fiscal year. Is there a motion to give a first reading to the order amending the budget?
So moved.
Frank, was it Frank that made the motion? And Sarah seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I want to just say I'm really pleased that we're doing this. This has not been rigorously done in the past, acknowledging that there are that budgets are unmovable.
Yeah, thank God. Yeah. Okay, we're ready to vote on the first reading. If so, Sarah?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
Frank Fulcher?
Yes.
Ordinance has received a first reading. Frank, I think you made the motion. You'll read the title.
City of Prospect Kentucky Ordinance Number 636, series 2024. I think that's.
Yeah, that's a typo, 2024.
And ordinance amending the budget for the General Fund of the City of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. No, 23, that's correct. July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance 637, So the next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance 637, 2023, this is amendments to propose amendments to the Forestation Board ordinance. There are two versions that are in the cap council packets. Draft or draft A and draft B. Is there a motion to give a first reading to?
That question?
Question?
We have A and B and we had A and B before and you did the committee. It's the, it's, and they either work in the committee or?
A, A is the, A is the original A as, as it's been amended and worked on. I mentioned, I mentioned in my remarks earlier that David Holmes assisted in that. So it's, I would call it the new and improved version of version A. This is first, this is first reading. So my expectation is that the committee will continue to meet and discuss the changes that are proposed and whether they're good and whether other changes are needed.
I feel as part of the committee, we were charged by the council to consolidate, combine and get general agreement with the pulling these two things together and report back to the council. And that hasn't been done. And that, I think this is preempting the process. And I, so I think we ought to withdraw this from the agenda today, subject to the committee reporting as it was originally conceived.
Well, that's, that's the council's prerogative. The, the question is, is there a motion for, to give a first reading to either of these versions? In the absence of a motion, there'll be no action taken.
Do, do the committees need more time?
It's
I recall the charge was, yeah, try to get together and come up with an agreement.
We have not had a chance to talk about B. So that's why I, that's why I helped the mayor work on A because we haven't had a chance to talk about B. I think it's entirely appropriate that we have another meeting and we publicly, with the Forestation Board's assistance, help us work through A and B and explain there's in my opinion, there's good in both of them. I think we just need to sort through them and figure out what provisions to do. And there may be other provisions that people suggest for us. So as long as we're able, as long as we're able to meet fairly soon, I think that's appropriate.
Yes, the work product, the work product that is expected, as, as I understand it from our committee, is a consolidated amendment to the Forestation Board. And where there is disagreement, create, create a living document and offer amendments to that, which can be voted on individually by the council. That is the program, I think, that we're working toward. And Sarah, is that, your understanding also?
I agree with that, but I think it doesn't hurt to have a review of this.
Okay, so is the, is there not a motion to give a first reading to either version? It's, it's fine with me if there's not, but I just need to ask the question. All right, let me, let me ask the council or the committee when it anticipates reporting back to the council with a version that the council can deal with? Because we, we went through this in the fall, we were going to get a report and we're now about four months down the road. So I'm fine with you all taking whatever time you need. But if you can predict with some degree of reasonable degree of confidence that you'll have a version at the April council meeting, I think that would be helpful.
I think it's going to take two more meetings. We've, we've gone of, actually the subcommittee that, that worked very hard, Linda and Sandra. And we haven't absorbed that yet collectively. And once that's done, then we have to put the document together and then let everybody read it before we, before.
That being, you want, you want a May meeting?
Yeah, I would think. Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Whenever you all do it, it's fine with me, but it sounds like you're anticipating that by the May meeting, you'll have something ready for presenting to the council for a first reading.
I
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. That's what we'll do then. That is, I believe, the last item on the agenda. Unless there's other business? Are we ready to adjourn? It's all moved. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I favor. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.